I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council's special meeting of March 16th, 2020. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mullen?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Wyper?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Farr?
Here.
We have quorum.
Norm Henny, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March 15th, 2020.
Thank you. We have one public comment on an item not on the agenda. Jeff Peterson, are you here?
I just wanted to, with everything that the state is doing and then what the federal government's talking about now, and then you have locally what LA City's doing. I think it's really important that we kind of get clear direction as to what exactly to do. My concern is if LA County is restrictive and the state doesn't get more restrictive, then two weeks, it doesn't really matter because you have people, we get visited from all over. Ventura's 15 minutes away from us, county, so I'm just hoping that we kind of stick with giving direction of what to do business-wise. So we can give our staff a heads up and whether start the unemployment or whatever we have to do. And I understand it's a fluid thing that could change every single day, but if you can communicate, that would be great. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, could we have a city manager update, please?
Good afternoon. I think in the interest of time, I'll skip my regular update and when we get to the item on the emergency declaration, I can give a full update on what we've been doing then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have council member reports.
I would hope we can just kind of move forward and get to the important items and get everyone home as quick as possible.
Council members, consensus?
I have nothing to report myself.
Okay, thank you. Rick Skyler?
Thank you.
Okay. Have any consent items been polled? Not?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve these consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Right, onto item 6A. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, I issued an emergency proclamation that would allow the city to declare the state of emergency. Following what many other local cities have done, what the county of Los Angeles, the state of California, and now the federal government has done. What that allows for the city is to have access to resources and funding that we might not have otherwise under FEMA. So as my role as the Director of Emergency Services, I'm able to declare a state of emergency. The city council has to ratify that proclamation within a period of seven days, so that is why the matter is in front of you today as a council. Since we issued this agenda yesterday, there have been a lot of developments. As you know, this is a very dynamic, fast-moving situation and things continually to change. So information that we have today, we didn't have yesterday. Some of the things that have come up since the posting of this agenda were first a declaration by the governor that issued the closure of certain businesses or limiting of people, the number of people who could gather. And then late last night, Los Angeles City Mayor Eric Garcetti issued an order whereby all restaurants would be closed except for takeout and delivery. And quite a few other types of businesses, including gyms, would also be closed. And so I think it would be prudent for the council to discuss what the city of LA mayor did. I have been in close communication with the city managers of Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, Culver City, and West Hollywood. And today, we all are recommending to our city councils that we would recommend that the, our cities also follow what the city of Los Angeles did. What we're doing, we know, is a large ask. But we think in the interest of public health and in the efforts to stop the spread of the virus, we need to do everything we can as local government to assist with the spread. So my recommendation to the council today would be to do exactly what the city of Los Angeles authorized last night. Also, one of the things that hasn't been discussed by the city of Los Angeles is regarding our coffeehouses. And that might be something the council wants to also limit, that coffeehouses would be for pickup or delivery only, assuming they do delivery. I can let you know as well as the community that all city facilities and parks are now closed, including our restrooms. I do think it might be prudent for us to ask, formally ask the county of Los Angeles to close all of the beaches that are under their purview. All of the state park facilities are also closed at this time. And I also have here at City Hall some essential staff. We are answering City Hall phones 24 hours a day at this point as part of our EOC operations. And I'm working to set up some sort of hotline or number where residents could call for specific information about coronavirus, but I don't have that accomplished as of yet, hopefully later today. I've also been in contact with the State Insurance Commissioner requesting extensions to insurance issues that I know all of our community who are going through the rebuilding process are going to face in terms of expiration of rental coverage and other benefits from their insurance coverage from the Woolsey Fire. So I am actively working on that with our lobbyists as well as the Insurance Commissioner. And I have staff working on developing what type of tolling agreements or other types of extensions we will need for the hundreds and hundreds of applications that we have in the queue, not only for rebuilding, but for regular development projects. And that would also be a suggestion to extend the existing fee waiver program that the council recently approved. The other item that the city of Los Angeles authorized yesterday was a moratorium on evictions for renters who are unable to pay their rent as a result of this pandemic. It specifically relates to if you lost your job or are unable to get paid as a result of the pandemic and you can demonstrate it, then you would not be subject to eviction. And I would suggest that the city council discuss that, not only as it relates to our residential rentals, but also our commercial rental properties as well. So I am sure there's a lot more that I could share, but I'll stop talking and let you all discuss what you need to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Reva. Council comments? Any speaker cards? No, okay, council comments? Mikey, please.
Oh, there is a speaker card.
If anybody didn't turn in a speaker card, I see some new faces here. Please do that at this time.
If you want to speak.
Okay, this is Dan, I'm sorry, is it Katz? Okay, thank you. You have three minutes.
Hey, guys, I'm Dr. Katz from Malibu Urgent Care. Nice to meet you all. I've been in touch with some of the folks here from the city council about what we can do to help the community. And I also obviously have been seeing patients on a daily basis and addressing the worried well and the people who think that they have coronavirus, et cetera. I know that there's, we like, Reva expressed to me a will and desire by the city council and the community to do something in case there's an outbreak here in Malibu. And I just, I wanted to give you my take on it as a physician. People who will be infected with the coronavirus who are well should stay home. And that's the overarching message that you should communicate to the folks here in Malibu. If you're, if you're well, if you have a fever, if you have a cough, but you're not short of breath, you're not vomiting, stay home. That is the safest thing to do for you and for the community. People who are going to be sick are going to be manifesting that by signs of respiratory distress, they're going to be short of breath, or they'll be vomiting, and those people will invariably need to be transported to a hospital. As of now, we do not have the capacity to care for these people in Malibu, not at the urgent care, not by a doctor doing a house visit. People who in the past from other SARS infections have required advanced care will require supplemental oxygen and ventilator care. And Malibu just doesn't have the capacity to provide that. I think that the only other thing that is dynamic and may change is if the capacity for broader testing becomes available in the city. And then we can actually do something. We can tell people whether or not they have the virus, how long they need to quarantine themselves for, et cetera. Right now, as you know, the virus, the testing for it is not available. I haven't even been able to get 10 kits for the clinic. I'm still arm wrestling with Quest Diagnostics. There is a new Roche test that is supposed to be made available that can process more than 4,000 specimens a day, and that would be a game changer. We're waiting to see what that's going to look like and whether or not that'll be available to us. But if that happened and there was an ability to test in the community, I suppose that having a tent set up for people to come in with all the other necessary equipment such as gloves, masks, face masks, you need the testing kits, you need a way to dispose of all the waste as people are coming in through the tent. Maybe a water station where people can wash their hands, obviously the necessary equipment in terms of computers, Wi-Fi, et cetera. Those are the kind of things that the city needs to be thinking about. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions from a medical point of view. My instructions to my staff is to stay healthy because we want to be able to support all the non-COVID-19 illnesses in Malibu. The fractures, the sprains, the lacerations, and bellyaches that we can adequately manage here in Malibu without having to send people to the hospitals where they could actually get infected. So happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you.
I believe we have one more speaker and then maybe we could have Dr. Katz come back up for questions or answers.
Sure, thank you. I have a speaker slip from Tim Morris. Any others? Please go ahead and bring them up.
Hey, everyone. I'm here representing the Paradise Cove Beach Cafe in Malibu. Obviously, Malibu's been through a lot of crazy situations in the past couple of years. And through the fire, you know, we stayed open and we fed first responders and everything like that. And we spoke into all our major purveyors and they have assured us and said that they would be happy to donate food and everything like they did during the last, pardon me, the last disaster. So as long as we're able to, we'd like to be open if we need to, we will be happy to distribute food to whoever needs it if this emergency does progress. So Malibu's, you know, a solidarity, a community of solidarity, and we're here to support whoever needs to be supported.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Anderson.
Thank you, Reva.
Hello, council. Thanks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I didn't know that I would be speaking today. I was just going to listen to the, you know, potential closures and see what, as a business owner, I own CrossFit Malibu just down the road. I'm, of course, open and willing to do anything that, you know, helps stop the spread of the virus. But when I heard the city manager talk about potentially closing beaches and trails and public areas, I decided, just to throw my two cents in, that this is one of the ways that people can be safely outdoors and very far away from other individuals. So I'd just like to express my, my desire to keep the beaches open. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa Benya.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lisa Benya. I'm another physician in Malibu, and I've been here for about 20-ish years. Been through a lot with the city as far as disaster, and I think this is one of the unprecedented ones where we're all a little lost right now. I want to support Dr. Katz and what he's saying earlier about kind of what Malibu's capacity is right now to handle if we do get a lot of cases. My job is an internist, so I'm primary care, which is very different than what Dr. Katz and the urgent care offers. And I feel like together, we can really help the community through this. My suggestion first, I think, is really the fear aspect needs to be addressed. Everybody's confused and nobody knows what to do. Should they go into the doctor? Should they stay home? What does sick look like? So I like the idea of having one central phone perhaps where people could call just with whatever questions they have. Those questions that could be filtered by physicians of the community, at least so that we could guide people to help them either determine, do you stay home? Or do you actually need a visit? And I think that's one of the most important things that we can start with. Like Dr. Katz mentioned, if people are very ill, we don't have the capacity here to care for them. So we do want to reiterate, if you're sick, really 911 in hospital is the best way to go. But there's this intermediate type of a client who might have symptoms but not sure how sick. So I think that phone call would be, or a phone number would be great to screen. We can help then determine who goes where. Second thing is we have the capacity with our business to do home visits, so we'd like to offer that to the community so that if the elderly can't get out, if no one can check on them, and also for kind of some of these intermediate symptoms where we're not sure, should they stay home in quarantine or be seen? We have the ability to do house calls, so we'd like to offer that as well. I think, like you said, this is a fluid situation. We're all kind of left with our pants down. We don't have tests. We have very few that we're, we're trying to get, and so daily we're available, and I'm sure he'll say the same thing to really help the community through this. So any way we can help, just let us know.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker. I'm so sorry. Is it Levi? Hard time reading this. The last person who put a speaker slip in? R-I-V-I, Rui? Renee, I'm so sorry. Okay, thank you. And your last name is? Williams, thank you.
I am one of your local insurance agents, and one of the concerns that I have is that because of this virus, businesses are going to be forced to be potentially closed. And they have mentioned that there are monies available through the federal government for the clients to access. Is there any way that we can get some information regarding that so I can get it out to my clients? Because I'm being flooded with calls about how can we, you know, what are our choice options here because of the impact of this virus that my clients are having? And if you could tell me where we can get that information, that would be super, because the insurance companies are probably not going to cover this.
Thank you. Okay, any other speaker slips? All right, who would like to start with council comments?
I'll go. If that's all right. All right, well, thank you, everybody at home and the few people here. Difficult situation, very fluid situation has already been said. I just want to go through a couple of things as quickly as I can. The math on this is not good, not to spread fear, but it's very obvious if you study what's happened in other countries and the actions we've taken so far, that we're following the exact same footsteps. And so most people get, the virus will not be that sick, but it's absolutely critical, in my opinion and the opinion of many of others, that we slow the spread down as much as possible so that our amazing doctors and medical facilities have a chance of taking care of the people that get sick. There comes the problem. Malibu, as you know, including yesterday afternoon, is a very popular destination. Most of our employees live in other cities. So whether we like it or not, the odds are extremely good we are spreading this disease, this virus already. It takes enough days to incubate that it can be very hard to tell, and with no test kits available, even harder to tell. But I think if you watch the numbers on the news lately, you can see it is rapidly accelerating. When you find out that it's already been in the west side of Los Angeles, Santa Monica, there's community spread. So not to be an alarmist, it's a virus, we'll all get through it together. But in my, in my opinion, I think absolutely we need to follow what the city of LA is doing. I think more, we really need to consider asking all of our local businesses to shut for a little while. And it's a really hard thing to say. I'm a business coach. I help businesses thrive and survive. So I do not say this lightly at all. But this is, this is unprecedented times, and we have to find a way to slow this down very quickly, or a lot more people could be hurt. At the same time, we absolutely have to be a source for information from the federal, state, and county level on where people can get assistance. Employees and business owners alike. I'm already working with all of my client businesses right now and we'll get through this, but we need, we need to support our business community very much right now. As far as the city, I absolutely agree and I've seen this coming. We need to stop all basic city services right now. And I understand the impact, particularly in the development part of it, is, is going to be difficult. Just if we stop it for, say, two weeks, I know it takes more than two weeks to ramp back up. I understand that reality. We need to keep our city staff healthy or they're going to be unable to help keep the city functioning on any level. I agree on the moratorium on evictions for residential and commercial properties affected by this virus. I think it's absolutely essential as we work through this on the federal, state, and local level. I agree too on, I think you made a good point about the beaches and getting outside. I agree. I mountain biked yesterday up in, up in the Santa Monica Mountains. It's absolutely the healthy, wonderful thing to do. I think as local residents, we have ways that we can enjoy the outdoors still. But preventing a lot of people from parking in parking lots and gathering in great mass, it's almost essential right now. I strongly suspect, and this is my opinion, that there is going to be a much stronger quarantine in effect in this area very shortly. And I think we absolutely need to, as hard as that is. My family, we've been self-quarantined for a number of days already. I think if you have household help in Malibu, you need to ask them to stay home right now and if you can, please keep paying them. I think that's the right thing to do. I very closely looked at and discussed with people, including on a global conference today, in Italy and China and how they handled this and how the spread happened. Basically, we've been doing exactly what Italy did and it didn't work. They had to quarantine their entire country, as have now Spain, as has now basically France. So we have to take this seriously and we will, we will get through it. But we gotta prevent the spread from happening really fast. That is my strong opinion and I think we have to make some very difficult and unprecedented decisions to do so. It is really important we get outside, especially if we're, if we are quarantining and quarantined or we're self-quarantining right now, it's very important to get outside and get exercise. It's absolutely true. If you own a gym or any sort of workout facility, figure out ways to gather outside with people where you're all keeping social distancing, alive and well, make that part of the program. We did on my mountain bike ride yesterday. Absolutely essential. I think on our restaurants, anywhere serving food, I'm helping my clients in the restaurant business figure out how to deliver and arrange for safe pickup. And we have to have food available, absolutely. I would like to see our markets and gas stations, which I think we need to leave open, and pharmacies. I'd like to help them with a policy on social distancing while they service people. I very, very strongly believe we have to slow the spread down. And I know it's not overrun Malibu yet. I get that. We don't want it to though. That's where we, that's where I think it starts. We avoid that ever happening, like has happened in town after town after town in other countries that did not take, get, take action soon enough. Looking at Dr. Benya and Dr. Katz, I, I hope, and I know you've been talking with Reva a lot and the city, let's keep on plans just in case things get worse and let's hope they don't. Maybe we can identify other local assets that aren't really in the inner circle and how they can be helped if needed. How our search team, which has already gone out and identified vulnerable populations in different neighborhoods, how we can keep on programs like that. So we're, let's just, let's just be ready in case. We don't want to end up in a position where other towns and other countries have ended up. Let's get ahead of it. Let's be, let's, let's be a town that's actually really, really thinking ahead. I think... So yes, I would ask the council to consider asking all local businesses to close, with the exceptions I've listed.
Just kind of a broad statement, but I think what the city-
It is, but we can define it further.
Right, yeah. I think what the city manager is asking for, in addition to adopting the resolution 2014, is for direction to her as the Director of Emergency Services to impose restrictions that mirror that of the city of Los Angeles so that all of the West Side cities can have the same restrictions in a thoughtful way.
I recognize that and I think that is thoughtful and I think it's great advice. I don't personally believe it's quite enough. I would ask our local businesses to self-quarantine themselves, I guess, because I am really concerned with the spread. It's really easy to have happen and it could be happening now and we don't even know it because people haven't come down with it. That's my opinion, just to share with the city council.
Right, and, and the, right. And we can certainly encourage the businesses to, to be mindful and to take precautions to enforce the distancing. Ultimately, there are some legal implications of just shutting down a business, so we want to balance our-
I could not be more aware of that. So I, I hear you. I'm expressing my concerns and my, what I, what I believe and I will stop and let the rest of the council talk.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next?
I'll go. Just want to say I really appreciate the calm manner in which the city manager's been dealing with all of this and doing a good job of communicating everything to the public and using the various methods that she has to get the word out, not only for what's happening in Malibu, but things that are happening with the county, et cetera. What we're doing here today is, is declaring an emergency. And just like in the Woolsey Fire, that gives the city manager a lot more flexibility to do all those things. Some of the things that you're, that Mikey's talking about are specifics. And I think we don't really need to go into those specific specifics right now because once we declare an emergency, city manager is the chief executive and basically in command can make those decisions, which I'm sure she will do in consultation with council members and business leaders and counterparts in the nearby cities as well as the county. So our role as council members is to pass legislation to support the emergency, which we're doing, and to communicate with the media, which we're also going to do, and to interact with elected officials from nearby municipalities and other governmental agencies. But the main thing I think all of us are here to do is to give our support to the city manager and the staff who has been doing a great job and will continue to do a great job. I don't think, I hear all the things that you're saying, Mike, and I appreciate that caution and I think that caution is warranted and we want to make sure that it's better for all of us to look back and when, when the, when this is over and say, hey, we did things that were too much instead of too little. And I think that's, that theme of what you're saying is, is very important. But the actual specifics on what needs to be done, et cetera. Once we declare an emergency, the city manager has the ability to act quickly and in concert with other governmental agencies and swiftly. And that's, that's what we're doing here without getting into all of the specifics. But I know she'll be talking with all of us as she comes to those decisions. So thank you again for all the clear communication that you've been giving to the public because I think it's very important. As we're heading into unknown waters, everyone's being super cautious and I think it, that's very good.
Thank you, Rick. Skylar?
I'd just like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-14 and see if there's a second on that and we can move forward.
I will second.
And I, I share a lot of the same, similar concerns as, as Mikey, but, and also obviously agree with Rick. And I think it's important for us to request that Reva, you know, definitely pays very close attention to what the county and city of LA does. And we should definitely be mimicking a lot of those things here so that there's consistency across the West Side and neighboring communities.
Thank you, Skylar. We have a motion and a second.
Are we still in discussion?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I visit Ralph's Market three times a week. This morning was my visit time. And I was alarmed by what I saw and the behavior at the Ralph's Market. So the sooner we come to a resolution here to take a proper path toward civility and medical awareness, I think we're on the right path. I'm, I'm disappointed in what I saw this, this morning. This is my community. I saw community members behaving in ways I would not have expected. The sheriffs were there, the fire department was there. 88 showed up for somebody that collapsed in the front of the Ralph's Market. And that was at eight o'clock in the morning. So we need to set a guideline. We need to keep our calm. Behave like neighbors that we are, whether you're at the West End or the East End, and recognize the facts that whatever we do here today as a city will be looked upon by other cities as, well, that's a visitor city with 13 million visitors a year. This is probably the right thing to do, especially for the next couple of weeks. As far as the financial ramifications from what we're considering today, I'll leave people at home with a, a couple of words that they can Google Siri or Alexa. Please look up fiat money, F-I-A-T money, fiat money. And then seigneurage, S-E-I-G-N-I-O-R-A-G-E. So that you must realize what we're doing here is going to be adopting something that takes FEMA funds, printing of the Fed, supporting municipalities like us. So look at the long-term financial ramifications, weigh out the health ramifications, behave like neighbors, stop honking and pushing your carts into each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. Okay, thank you. Okay, Skylar, go ahead, please.
Either Christie or Reva. The woman that had asked the insurance question, did you guys have any further information on that?
I don't at this time, I'm sorry.
Okay, our, one of our jobs is to direct staff and we have in front of us a council item. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carried adopting the resolution 2014, or to take it as direction from the council to mirror the restrictions that the county of, or the city of Los Angeles has put into effect and continue to coordinate and ramp that up as necessary.
No, I think it's just recommended action, adopt Resolution 2014, ratifying the proclamation of existence of a local emergency by the Director of Emergency Services and giving her the flexibility to do that sort of thing should, should she feel that it's necessary and not have to necessarily confer on all the specific details on emergency.
Right, but she's coming to you tonight, and I'll speak now as her lawyer, but I'm really yours, that, saying that she thinks that that's necessary and she's looking for the political will because these are big steps. And I, I think we heard that from all of you, but I just want to confirm that she had, that you have her back on these extraordinary measures.
We do.
Yeah, I think we do. And if the county chooses not to close the beaches, that might be a decision that we have to, might collaborate on because those are county beaches, they're not ours to restrict.
I would suggest at this time, like, Mikey, not closing that stuff. I also heard some like requests from members of the public to keep parks open so that people can go outside, not in the sense that they'd be congregating in groups of 50 or more, but I, I think that that's a good outlet for people.
You know, for what it's worth, the city of Hermosa Beach is considering a measure that will keep the parks and beaches open but prohibit pickup games. So that they wouldn't, people wouldn't be, you know, passing a ball around or, you know, any of those kinds, in, in addition to our organized sports payout, but to allow, you know, family and individual activity.
I think my concern with the parks would be keeping the restrooms open and the cleanliness and safety, public health, safety of those restrooms. And also, you know, it's very difficult for us without law enforcement present to control the number of people. Yesterday at West Park, there were a lot of people there and, you know, I don't want to put that onus on city staff to separate people. So I'll follow whatever direction you like. I, I understand these are very, very difficult decisions, but I'm also looking at what other municipalities throughout Southern California and throughout the state are doing in an abundance of caution to protect their residents. And what I'm hearing is the best thing is, you know, we don't want people on playgrounds and then I don't have a staff there to clean it immediately after. I mean, I think these are very critical times that we need to, to be overly cautious. So that, that's why I brought those up.
Okay, I'd like to point out that we've, as a city, canceled non-essential meetings. City Hall is now open by appointment only. The city does not run beaches and harbors, that's the county. So I want to make sure the public understands that. Counsel, do you want to have more comments about the parks?
I, I mean, I'll make a, a comment. I know, I know maybe I'm on my own direction here, I'm not sure where I'm at, but while we've been sitting here, the entire city of San Francisco's locked down for three weeks while we're sitting here. So I think we can baby step ourselves away, but the reality is, this situation is getting worse very, very quickly. And I, I'm just urging us to take difficult, very difficult measures, but strong measures to prevent the spread. That's my opinion.
Well, when we consider closing down a major thoroughfare of PCH or actually asking chippy or sheriffs to monitor the activities on those highways and the public beaches that are run by different agencies, whether it's the state or the county, those difficulties will be handed off to those agencies, whether it's state parks or county beaches. So we have to rely on them and their wisdom in what to do with their properties. Since we only police Zuma Beach in the summer, the rest of the beaches do share participation with LA County sheriffs for law enforcement. So those are things that we're going to have to work through. As a municipality, we can't shut down other people's property. I make sure Karen did mention that, I mentioned it earlier. And on the lighter side, I'd like to ask Dr. Katz or Dr. Benya, does saltwater kill bacteria or virus?
The answer is, like many things in medicine, is it depends. There are bacteria that absolutely thrive in saltwater. Certain marine injuries that we treat in the emergency department, we make sure to cover for those bacteria that live in water. I, I don't know specifically with regards to coronavirus, how tenacious it is in the face of saltwater. I don't have that information. But yes, they can survive in saltwater.
Thank you, doctor.
Okay, I think we're getting off on a tangent here. We voted on this and you wanted a question from the city manager as to whether it has supported the council to do what she thinks is necessary along the lines of what they do in other municipalities. I think you have our support to use appropriate judgment and we have confidence here. I know that, I feel that way and I think that our vote reflects that.
Thank you, Rick. Yes.
Is that enough detail for you? Okay.
Okay, I would like to ask the city manager and city attorney if we need to have a discussion about fee waivers, extensions, or anything like that. I'll, I'll let the city attorney answer that.
We may, but not today. We're not, we're, we, you know, we're really early on this. So we'll see how it shakes out. I, I feel, I know that the planning department is really trying to figure out how to remotely respond to its caseload. So we'll have a better sense in a few days how, what the pace is, whether it keeps with the ordinary pace or slows a little, or maybe it'll speed up if you're out of the office and not get interrupted by a call. So we'll be back to you, I think, with some of those things.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we can consider Item 6A resolved. Moving on to 6B. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. So again, this staff report reflects the, how fast and how dynamic this situation is and how it continues to evolve. When I first developed this a couple of days ago, we thought we would be able to continue to manage City Hall by appointment only. We set up a system on Friday whereby today- We set up a system on Friday whereby today people were able to make appointments online or call and make an appointment to continue with their development projects and their rebuilding project, projects. What I'm realizing today is how important it is to actually keep city staff out of this building and home as much as possible. So we started the day today trying to get all of the staff that we can set up to work remotely. At this time, we'll have about 30 to 40 staff who will be able to continue their regular job functions, working from home. There are some people whose jobs do not allow them to, to work from home. There are certain things you just can't do if you're not at the city or if you're a field worker. For those employees, I'm requesting that the city council authorize us using paid administrative leave so those people are at home, they're not having to tap into their accrued sick leave if they have any. I have a lot of staff who are at home caring for children who are now out of school or caring for family members. If the situation gets worse, I know that I'm also going to have staff who are either sick or at home caring for people who are ill and won't be able to work. The remainder of our staff are either working remotely, serving our EOC and doing EOC functions. Today, I have a core group of people here at City Hall. For those staff, I'm requesting a temporary 5% pay increase. That does not include me as the city manager, that's just for city staff. I did some very quick calculations on that 5%. It looks at about $15,000 a month, so depending on how long the situation evolves, that 5% would be reimbursable by FEMA. And since we now are under a formal declaration from the federal government, we will have FEMA funds accessible. I did just want to remind the council that we have had city staff working in basically an emergency situation since November 2018. And I continue to tap on these individuals who are dedicated and professional and continue to be public servants to this community. We are all here, including myself, to continue to do that, but I just felt that it was, I'm, I'm asking people to go above and beyond to leave their families and risk their own health at this time. So that's what I have before you. We will continue to do the messaging that we've been doing the last few days, which is, we're doing a 10:00 AM and a 4:00 PM update. If there's information that's important for the community to know in between that time or after those times, we'll certainly provide those messages out. We're using our reverse 911 system, which is called Everbridge, which reaches all landlines in the city of Malibu as well as all cell phones that are billed to the 90265 zip code. So I hope the community is getting those phone calls with important information. Continue to urge people to sign up for e-notifications through malibu city.org. There is a banner across our website that is running with up-to-date information on the coronavirus and information where you can go get more details if you need it. And then just a couple other things that I wanted to make sure both the council and the community know that we're working on. I have our CERT team activated. They're out in the community, talking to neighbors and within their neighborhoods, identifying where we have people who are elderly or people who are ill, who may in a few days start to need assistance with food or food delivery. So we're coordinating that. I am in the middle of coordinating with grocery stores and, and to make sure that people are doing social distancing while they're shopping. I'm concerned about what Councilmember Wagner said. I do have deputies doing foot patrols through all of the grocery stores and I will continue to do that and ramp that up if I need to. We're coordinating with the county to find a location, coming down, not, not quite yet, but where we'll be able to have a location like we had during Woolsey Fire for the disaster, disaster assistance center, that, that will be someplace people can go for SBA loans. And so we're working on finding a location for that. And I think that's all I have. But again, we are here to serve the community. I am personally here and will do everything I can to help people feel safe and respond to whatever they need. And anybody is welcome to email me at Riva, I'm sorry, R Feldman at malibu city.org if there's anything I can do to assist. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public speaker slips on this item? No. Okay, counsel?
Thank you, Riva. I would make a motion to, I don't know as far as any specifics, other than I think we're going to go with what you're suggesting as far as staff load goes and people that are, that are staying on and whatnot. I think that you have a very good assessment of that as far as essential and nonessential personnel. And you recognize that maintaining our storm protocols and all that stuff is very important. So, I would kind of go with the recommended action on this to authorize the paid administrative leave and a temporary 5% pay increase for essential personnel.
I, I think I'd also just need some direction from the council on the amount of resources that we give for the rebuilding efforts. This morning, I realized that we're going to have an issue if we continue with construction activities in the city for a couple reasons. One, as more areas get, or things get tighter and there'll be certain age people aren't supposed to be going out, we're going to start having issues with people being able to come in and actually do the construction. In order for construction to continue in the city, I need to have building inspectors and building safety staff available and working with each other in person. And I don't feel that that's the best thing to continue doing, but I also recognize how important it is to continue those activities. So I'd ask for direction from the council on whether you want us to continue regular rebuilding activities or to put a pause in that for the next few weeks.
I think that it would maybe wise to put a pause in that for a few weeks. So I don't know if that means halting all construction or non, or all construction and, you know, it's probably a wise, unfortunate thing to have to go through right now because I know that puts a lot of people out of work, a lot of people out of work. But it's probably the wisest move.
Well, you don't have to, I mean, halting constructions up to the individual business owner, you're just saying the role of the inspectors, et cetera, in support of that.
I can't have construction going on if I don't have building inspectors working and I can't have building inspectors working if I don't have my other supportive building safety staff working. And if I continue to use city staff to do those regular duties while I have people not available to work, either because they're ill or they're on paid administrative leave or they're caring for family members, I'm whittling down the resources that I have to actually serve in our emergency operations center. So, we don't have the luxury this time of tapping into mutual aid that we did during the Woolsey Fire. So we're, you know, going to be at a skeleton crew and God forbid any of us start getting sick, I'm not going to have the resources to continue regular operations and EOC operations.
I would agree with Skylar. It's a really difficult decision, but you're, I think I've pretty much made my position very clear. I just think we got to do everything we can to prevent the spread, including at City Hall and including in our neighborhoods where construction would happen and it's a really tough time. But it's, now's the time to do it and try and get through this quickly.
And I realize what, what this means for this community and this is not a recommendation that I bring lightly to the council. And we will, if we can, continue what we can. Yolanda has been in touch with probably over 35 projects and, and folks in the last day or so. You know, we want to help people, but I also need to weigh the safety out, public safety out.
I think if you could give a timeframe of when you want to suspend it and then revisit it, you know, like if it's 30 days or 60 days or something like that, just so that, as this gentleman pointed out, you know, although he's, I don't think he's in the construction business, but if you can say, okay, we're going to revisit in 30 days or something like that, I think that would be helpful for those people.
Yeah, some kind of a sunset clause on that because without that clear definition, it's difficult for the contractors to keep their people aboard. So if you're a subcontractor like Skylar with an electric company or A&amp;B Plumbing, you have to have some kind of timeframe so that they can get their guys back to work once the declaration is over. So I would say we need to have a sunset time on this. Thank you, Rick.
I was also maybe just going to suggest to say like have this maybe go into effect on Wednesday or something to give people a little bit of time.
I'm going to ask Yolanda to, to answer some of those questions. We agree and we think, you know, maybe revisiting it every seven days might be the best, but I'll let her speak to that.
This is a very critical decision and as you're making recommendations, since Riva's bringing something to you, I really, we need to think this through. And I understand that we need to be cautious, but revisiting it often is what I would recommend. As of right now, we, we are receiving approximately seven to 12 inspections per day on the construction portion of it. I'm asking my staff to be conscious about not being close to any other contractors, bring a laptop instead of touching the plants. And what we do, and that is the quality control of that construction, right? On the rebuild, that there might be families that are already paid for their concrete and their foundation to be poured this week. So when you're stating stop everything, it, it's, I just want you guys to be aware of what that means and I understand. I know, I will follow your decision. It's just my job to inform you about it. Being cautious about this is critical and I would recommend that you allow city staff to make those decisions and triage those projects and we need, we must be out there on a one-on-one and weekly, then we come back to you. I'm assuming that as this chaos and pandemic virus is happening through different cities, a lot of the workers are going to stay home. So to me, it's just, let's be cautious about this and, and...
I think we all know that it's not easy.
This is a monstrously difficult situation. It really is. There's no good answer here.
I think that public health has to be the priority and if Riva's indicating that it's not a wise idea to have the inspectors out in the field at this time, then I think we need to recognize, and I work in that field, I have guys today that said, hey, I don't feel comfortable coming to work with all this stuff that's going on. So I said, stay home.
So I, I think what, what would probably be best is that, I think we all share the desire to keep things moving if we can. And I'm going to work with Yolanda and my other department heads to do that as much as we can within the safety of both the public and our staff. And just let the council know that if we get to a point, and I don't know if that's going to be tomorrow or in nine days, where we're going to have to stop, we were going to stop and that that's...
And that we will not come back to you. So we will take the decisions, we will be cautious, but then if we get to that point, that's enough and we will do that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't, I don't think that we need to be convening a meeting weekly to go over this stuff and I think that Riva has the authority to do that. So maybe at this time you want to say, look, we haven't made up our decision, but, you know, we know that that could be coming in the next couple of days.
But as... Thank you. Yeah, that's exactly what we need.
One thing that I do want to add, just because this is political and it's money involved, we need your support and we need your voice. At the end, we are on this together. We are here to recommend you, we're public servants and we will do our best to do as you guys direct us to do. Thank you.
I think you made a good point about the triage. You said the key word, which is triage. There may be, you may have guidelines and then there may be some certain thing that's lined up and there's a lot of, you know, money of whatever behind it or people waiting for a long time. That's, you know, I think that the city manager and you can make those decisions.
And now that I'm here talking about the rebuilds and the appointment only, so I'm trying to avoid having families come to see us or to be here, but those, there are some of them, they are only waiting for a letter so they can go to their bank so, so they can get the, the amount of money that are going to be required to rebuild. So I'm trying to figure out ways in which I can write them a letter if I, the plans have been approved, so we avoid a contact. I guess I want to tell the whole rebuild families that we're still very much committed. And I am here and I have been calling and letting them know we haven't forgotten. And I know this is a terrible time to have this type of events, but the city manager is fully committed with staff to continue helping them and whatever I can do to facilitate ways for them to be, to get their reimbursement from their insurance or to continue the projects go on, we're finding solutions so that can happen, meaning electronic submittals, PDF reviews. So we will be working on that and the efforts will not stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda. You do an amazing job. You're so appreciated. The community is so appreciative of you. You really have gone above and beyond. I personally, we committed to have an emergency meeting here every day if we need to. This is a very fluid situation. We don't know all the answers. So I, I, I think it's well said, we have to be very, very fluid on this as we go forward.
Thank you.
I was just going to add, and Kristi, I think you already said we're going to, we'll deal with this in the future, but it would probably be wise for the council to consider some sort of extension of that sunsetting with permitting fees, you know.
It's on the list and we'll work on that. We're fine for right now, but knowing that we'll be looking at extending that. So I just want to be clear that the priority, if we can have the bandwidth for it, will be to continue staff assisting with the rebuilding efforts, but we will pause all other regular city business for the time being. Is that correct?
Sounds good.
I think so, yes. Okay, so, Kristi, do you mind restating our motion?
Yeah, I, I believe the motion was to approve staff recommendation.
So on 6B, do we have a motion and a second?
I made the motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Want to say one last thing? Doctors, Paradise Cove, CrossFit guy, business representatives, insurance people, Norm.
Joffries.
Thank you very much for coming down here and giving us your input and taking the time to be a part of this.
I had one last comment as well. Thank you, Mayor. You see how we adopted quickly over a weekend? Our awareness level is high. We really focused on this, that's for everybody in the room here and anybody that's watching. So if we have a meeting in two weeks, we can resolve, resolve a lot in two weeks. And so I'm thinking that we'll schedule another meeting in two weeks if, if you guys see that that's about the right time to discuss again in public.
I, I have to point out, it's such a rapidly evolving situation. I think all we can do is be nimble and, and be here as needed.
I think I would just add, Riva and city attorney, just don't hesitate to call a meeting if you think anything's necessary at all.
I, I appreciate hearing that because we, we will need you and there will be decision points. So we, we know that and thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned at 1:59 PM.